I'd like to call the meeting into order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission meeting, June 24th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes of May 27th, 2025, regular meeting, and June 10th, 2025 workshop.
So moved.
We have a motion? And a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number three has been, well, no public comment, Mr. Logan?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three has been deferred. Item number four, we are going to address after item number 11. So we'll come back to that. So we'll start with item number five. Final plat, the re-subdivision of Lot 15, Morningside Acres, Section 1. Two lots on 1.02 acres requested by Huddleston Steel. Property located on Old Jones Mill Road, tax map 13H, Group A, parcel 39, R1 low-density residential zoning district, property owned by Martha H. Queener. Mr. Logan?
So this is a request for final plat approval, and this is the re-subdivision of Lot 15 of Morningside Acres. And you can see there on the screen, this property is located at the corner of Meadowlark Lane and Old Jones Mill Road. So if we zoom in here, you can see the property has an existing home on it, and of course, the new lot will be here in the rear section. This property is zoned R1, which is low-density residential, which is the orange color there on the screen. So this entire area is R1. And this property is currently owned by Martha Queener. And if we move down, here's some photos of the property. So this is taken there at the corner, and you can see the fire hydrant shown there. Another view of the home. So it's a brick home ranch style that's existing on the lot. And then this is the plat on the screen. So you can see the proposed soil areas when the state came out and did their testing. And also, you can see one lot, which the existing home will be on Lot 15 when it's subdivided. And that lot's .64 acres, and then the new lot in the back will be .38 acres. And all the comments have been addressed, looks like from all the departments, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? If none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept is submitted.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number six. Final plat, replat Lot 8 of Richland South LLC property. Two lots on 1.33 acres requested by TTL. Property located on Murfreesboro Road, tax map 14, parcel 72.16, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Woodhaven Development Group. Mr. Logan?
So this is a request, another final plat request, and this is a replat of Lot 8 of Richland South. And this is two lots on 1.33 acres. So on the screen, you can see this lot fronts Murfreesboro Road, and just behind it is the Carpenter's Training Trust, the existing educational facility. So this is in the area of Chipotle and Aldi as well, which has been built in last year. So zooming in, you can see the lot more closely, and it is next door to, used to be Miracle Baptist Church, and now I believe it's Emmanuel Baptist Church. But anyway, this is the lot, and they've not submitted yet, but the plan for the future is to build a Seven Brew coffee shop at this location. So we should be seeing that site plan in the next few weeks. As I said, it's 1.33 acres, and some photos here of the site. So right now, the area's been cleared and graded for construction. This is Murfreesboro Road to the right of the screen. And then the plat shows Lots 8 and 10. And you can see there how they'll be arranged after the subdivision. And they do have Lot 8 will be about 2/3 of an acre, and Lot 10 also will be about 2/3 of an acre when it's all completed. And there are no comments on this item either, so that completes the report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lyd, the two comments have been addressed that were at the workshop?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this item? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved is submitted.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven has been deferred. We'll move on to item number eight. Site plan, Mid-South Carpenter's Training Trust, new pavilion of 6,767 square feet on four acres requested by Womble &amp; Associates. Property located at 130 Veterans Memorial Parkway, tax map 14, parcel 72.09, C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Mid-South Carpenter's Training Trust. Mr. Logan?
So this is a site plan request for the Mid-South Carpenter's Training Trust. They are proposing a new pavilion, open-air pavilion that would be 6,767 square feet. So on the screen here, the last item was the final plat that sits in front of this building. So we're in the same general area on Murfreesboro Road. And this property is also zoned C2, which is the red color on the screen. So it's commercial zoning already. Here's a photo of the existing Carpenter's facility. So the pavilion's proposed, in this view, it'd be over here to the right where I'm pointing. And they currently have an outdoor classroom that they're using, so this would go in the same area as that outdoor classroom. Here's another photo with the monument sign at the front entrance to the school. So these are the architectural elevations, and the applicant is proposing to brick each of the columns to roughly 50% of the height. They did that to have the masonry material that is outlined in the Murfreesboro Road overlay district. And there's one more view from the side of the proposed pavilion. So again, it's open-air. This is an architectural rendering that shows the open-air design. So now we have the site plan shown on the screen, and you can see, when I zoom in here to the right. So grayed out over here is the existing building, and then to the southeast, they'll build And as I said earlier, it is roughly 6,700 square feet. And I believe, since it's not heating and cooled, it's kind of a small plan set, but that's the plan. I think we've covered everything, and there's no outstanding staff comments. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a representative here for this project? If you would, state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Sarah Tu, and located at 216th Centerview Drive in Brentwood.
Thank you.
The stone and brick in the covered area here, is that going to match or replicate what we have on the existing building?
The existing building, yes. It's the same.
And then will there be permanent tables, supplies, machinery underneath that structure?
So we did visit the existing classroom. I'm assuming they would be using the same equipment. It did look like they had some type of equipment outside. I'm just not sure exactly what they would be using, but... Are you asking if it would be fenced?
Yeah, I mean, is it going to be permanent? I'm obviously worried about theft or whatnots or...
That is a great question. Danny, I'm going to ask him to answer that one. Thank you.
I'm Danny Womble, 216th Centerview Drive. It'll be used exactly like it's been used ever since it was built. This is an area where they teach their students how to build scaffolding, how to put the scaffolding up, and so they'll have hand tools like nail hammers and skill saws and things of that nature. And they'll build a scaffold. They'll practice on it, then they'll take it down, then they'll build another one. All this is doing is giving them a cover over it so they can hold class when it's raining.
Okay. So the plan isn't to add materials out there overnight and stuff over the long term?
No.
All right.
No.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept is submitted.
Motion to accept, and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, I'm sorry, item number nine. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, rezoning of property requested by Corey McLennan. 4.36 acres, property located at 782 Waldron Road, tax map 29, parcel 38. Current zoning district, R1 low-density residential zoning district. Proposed zoning district, C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Corey McLennan. Mr. Logan?
Thanks. This is a request for rezoning, and you can see here on the screen, this is on South Waldron Road, roughly at the intersection with Blair Road. This is Blair to the right that comes off. So this applicant is requesting to change from residential R1 to commercial zoning, and they are requesting C2, which is Highway Service Commercial. And as we zoom in, you can see more clearly the road, Waldron Road here, and this is the house that's existing. And there's some other outbuildings in the rear yard. And this is 4.36 acres. So this is all on the west side of Waldron Road. And again, it's just north. It's one, there's one lot between this request and the intersection of Blair Road. So I'll go back to the larger map. For more perspective, this is the ridge subdivision at the bottom left, and then the Industrial Development Board property, the roughly 77 acres, is this parcel to the north of the ridge, and then this parcel beside the ridge. And then this is Arbor Ridge under construction in the bottom right corner. So there's a whole lot of moving parts on this side of town. You can see the assessor's office has already platted this right-of-way for the extension of Blair Road. So that's for Blair West. So that's already showing there the new road alignment as it's built, as it would be built. So on the zoning map, this entire stretch is solid R1, which is low-density residential today. And it's our understanding that the applicant is anticipating with the future road widening of Waldron Road, that they're anticipating commercial development. And of course, with the larger roadway and wider roadway, the complexion of that whole area is going to change. So that's part of the reasoning that the applicant's requesting this rezoning. Here's some photos, so you can see the existing home and existing driveway. And then they do have the wooden fence that goes along the entire frontage. You can see that a little better here. So this is looking north, back toward I-24, and you can see the fencing, and then the road frontage. And these are some of the tax maps that the applicant submitted. And this is the original subdivision that goes back many, many years, but it was called Golden Estates when it was platted. And of course, on these, there's not really staff comments, so that completes the report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? Our motion is for a recommendation for favorable or unfavorable, so we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen.
Second.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll be sending a favorable recommendation to the mayor and Alderman. Next item, item number 10. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for subdivision acceptance, Brookside Phase 2, 88 lots requested by Mitchell Bowman. Property located off McCall Lane, tax map 29, parcel 28, R2 medium-density residential zoning district. Mr. Logan?
So this is a request for subdivision acceptance. This is at Brookside Phase 2, and this is 88 lots. And you can see there on the screen, it's the area outlined in blue, this whole area outlined in blue. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Lyd.
Okay, we've worked with Mr. Bowman for some time, and he's worked with us well. We've gotten through all of the comments over the past few months, and the staff has no further comments. All items have been addressed.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Once again, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to Mayor Alderman.
Second.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will be sending a favorable recommendation on this item. Item number 11. Final plat, 314 retail building, two lots on 1.01 acres requested by Danny Womble. Property located at 314 Old Nashville Highway, tax map 17D, Group B, parcel 15, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Good Brothers LLC. Mr. Logan?
Thanks. So this is a request for final plat at the 314 retail building located on Old Nashville Highway. And on the screen here, it's the area outlined in blue, and this is directly across from Jackson Station Apartments, which is shown there also. So closer view, this is Woody Thomas at the intersection of Old Nashville Highway, and then of course Woody Thomas aligns with the entrance to the Jackson Station Apartments. So you can see all that well there. This property is already zoned C2, which is Highway Service Commercial, and it's been zoned C2 for several years now. But as you remember from several workshops in the past couple of months, they're still being used residentially. So this photo shows the residential lot here, shows the two residential structures. So the house there with the front porch and the large tree, of course, that's the older structure. And then the two-story building to the left was added sometime later, but is a detached There's a different view of the two buildings. So this first, this first item is just the plat. So currently, this property is 1.01 acres. And let me scroll to the... I think the plat is back at the front, but since this got moved around, just show you this part. So this is what the applicant's proposing. You can see Lot 1 and 2, one on the left, two on the right. Lot 1 would come out to just over half an acre, .55, and Lot 2 would be .41 acres. And of course, you can see, for orientation, the bottom here is Old Nashville, and this is Woody Thomas to the left. There is a 15-foot private utility easement that they're showing here in the center, and of course, they're showing this easement at the rear of the property. It says easement for the benefit of emergency vehicle and municipal solid waste services. So that would be for fire, rescue, et cetera. I believe all the comments on the plat have been worked through, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? And we'll entertain a motion.
Someone's shaking the door.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion on the final plat to accept is submitted.
We have a motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Stand.
Motion passes. We will be going back to item number four, everyone. Item number four. Site plan, 314 retail building, new building of 9,750 square feet on 1.01 acres requested by Danny Womble. Property located at 314 Old Nashville Highway, tax map 17D, Group B, parcel 15, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Good Brothers LLC. Mr. Logan?
So this is the site plan request for the same property at 314 Old Nashville. So again, you can see on the screen, it's a property outlined here in blue. I'll move on to the site plan since I've covered these same maps. So the site plan shows Phase 1 and 2. Zoom in here for a better view. So this is Woody Thomas to the left, and this entire brown area is the proposed building. So you can see the phase line here between 1 and 2. Phase 1 is here to the right and would be 2,550 square feet. And then each of the remaining four suites would be equal-sized of 1,800 square feet. And then that totals the 97.50 that's in the report. So they're still showing the parking here in the front and also wrapping around the building to the Woody Thomas side. And they're showing the three-lane, or three-lane wits for the ingress egress on Old Nashville. And of course, they do have the sidewalk shown that was discussed a couple of weeks ago at the workshop. So that's a general layout. Let me go back to the architectural. So these are renderings that were supplied by the applicant. So this is the entire retail center as it would look. And of course, they've just highlighted this brick color for Phase 1 to sort of make it stand out, but I believe the entire center would match, and the brick color would match when it's completed. And then this is from the materials board, so this is showing the type of brick that would be used, as well as the trim. They are proposing hardy board for the rear wall, as well as the temporary wall if it's needed. And I know there was the discussion of the temporary wall a few weeks back. And let's see. Of course, the planning comments have remained on here since the beginning, and most of those planning comments have to do with the use of the property as residential, and the mixing of uses if that were to happen. I see some utilities. I'll turn it over to Mr. Lyd so he can discuss those.
Okay, the utility comments are for information only. That is just to assist the engineer and the developer in complying with our requirements. And so those really don't have any impact on what y'all are looking at. Everything complies with the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance. There, if you look at the drawings you have in your packet, it still says temporary gravel access drive. However, the plans they submitted to us did not say that anymore, and I believe we can bring Mr. Womble up, and he'll confirm that, that that is going to be a paved access drive now. So we have no staff comments.
Thank you. Mr. Womble, if you wouldn't mind.
Danny Womble, 216th Centerview Drive, Brentwood, Tennessee.
Chairman Floyd Womble &amp; Associates, 216th Centerview Drive, Brentwood.
Thank you, gentlemen. And just confirming what Gary said, that the rear drive was going to be paved.
Yes, it will be paved, and yes, I agree with everything that Gary said.
Since we have them up there, any questions or comments for the applicant?
Yeah. Have we, have we resolved the, let's see, the Phase 1, Phase 2, you know, two gas meters, I believe, or two water lines? Has that been, I don't see any literature in the packet. I mean, has that been addressed or...
Mr. Lyd, can you perk up a bit? Ms. Flood?
Yes, sir. With the two lots, there will be two meters.
And it is one tenant, then, that is paying the rent?
Yes. Yes.
And do we have confirmation that, do we have a date certain, then, on the demolition should this not go as planned, let's say?
We provided a copy of the lease. Lease goes through the end of December in 2026, and the property owner will move the tenant out and then tear the building down. We also provided bids for a bond to go with the plat. The bond amount would be $26,000, as we proposed, and that would ensure that if the property owner doesn't perform, the city can take it down with the money from that bond.
Okay. It could be before December 31, 2026, that we see?
It could be.
Okay. That's the hope. Very good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mayor?
This is for legal. Is there anything that needs to be in the motion or any paperwork from a legal perspective needed in regards to the potential bond?
I would just make the motion, I would suggest that you make the motion subject to providing sufficient paperwork relative to the bond and the timing. So if that's all included in the packet as submitted, is what I understand from Mr. Womble, then I would, if you were to make a motion, I would say that everything is contingent on the accuracy of the submittal documents.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kip, Mr. Kudt?
Mr. Womble, just on the, I see Volunteer Demolition and Patriot, HDCE Services. We didn't get anything from them writing?
Both of those were emailed in, and the third one was 18,704 from Patriot Demolition. So the three of those added together averaged out as $18,958. Then the regulations require add 20% for inflation. That comes out to $22,749. That comes out to $22,749. We have put inflation on the largest bid, which was 21,000. That brings it to 26,000. So based on the average, it actually gives you $7,042 to cover inflation, or 37%, to mitigate the fact that these were email bids.
I just, we didn't get a copy of the HDCE Services. We didn't get a copy of that. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah. Well, they wanted a bid.
Same question, Mayor?
Okay.
All three of them are there.
Okay.
Yeah, all three of the bids are in.
So, obviously, the tenant fully understands that come the end of '26, that the building's coming down, if not before then? And the bond will be submitted to the city? Obviously, we'll have the funds to do this?
Yes, the bond will be posted at the time the plat's approved and signed and recorded.
Good sir?
Yes.
Sir? Here. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept with the provision of the bond being included at $26,000 for demolition.
I'll second.
We have a motion to accept with the mayor's contingencies and a second from Mr. Coates. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number 12. Combination plat, 192 and 198 Old Nashville Highway. One lot on 1.35 acres requested by Huddleston Steel. Property located at 192 and 198 Old Nashville Highway. Tax map 15M Group E, parcels four and five. C-2 Highway Service Zoning District. Property owned by Better Home LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is a combination plat request for 192 and 198 Old Nashville Highway. This lot is 1.35, or the two lots together are 1.35 acres. So when it's combined, it'll be one lot of 1.35 acres. And you can see there on the screen, this is listed or shown, this is the railroad track that goes across the top third of the picture. So this is the underpass and Old Nashville Highway here. So of course, then, this is the really sharp hairpin turns if you want to go down Old Waldron Road. But this building here, I know we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, my understanding is the oldest remaining building that's intact in Laverne. I don't know if that's true, but I've been told that several times. So it's, some people refer to it as the old glass building. So zooming in here, you can see it a little closer on the screen. So this is the sharp curve that I mentioned, and there's several, or it looks like an addition that was built at some point in the past to the original building. But anyway, you can see how it's laid out today. There's been open storage on this lot. There's been vehicles stored here. There's been a lot of things at this location. So going on to the zoning map here, you can see in the red color, this is all zoned C-2 commercial, along with the rest of the block. And here's some photos. So this, in this photo, the underpass would be off to the right, out of view, but the oldest part of the building is here where I'm pointing. And then it looks like at some point, there was an addition here with these windows, and then another addition, this metal building. And the other picture just shows the remaining part of the lot beyond that metal building. So there's a larger area there that's fenced in. And then this is taken actually from that sharp curve at the corner, another view of the building. So the plat, of course, is combining the two lots, so a little bit easier process than subdividing. But you can see there on the plat, it's like there's about 59,000 square feet of land, give or take. And then just the existing utilities are shown there, the existing light pole. And this right here is labeled existing gravel. If I didn't mention that, there's a larger area of gravel there. That's pretty much it. Since it's not a site plan, it's just the plat, so stage one. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept. We have a second. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Meeting adjourned.